I call this August 1st meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission to order and ask that you stand with us as we say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sommer, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benbury?
Here.
Commissioner Bradford?
Here.
Commissioner Morrison?
Here.
Commissioner Pollard?
Here.
Commissioner Schramke?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Chair Crisillas?
Here.
Mr. Morrison, you have the minutes motion?
Yes, ma'am. I move that the reading of the minutes for July 14th, 2022 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting, as prepared by staff, be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Schramke. Are there any corrections, additions, changes? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Commissioner Schramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Benbury?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. The Paducah Planning Commission also serves as the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency for the city of Paducah, and our first item of business is a URCDA petition. Mr. Benbury, you have that, please?
Ma'am, I move that the use URCDA find the property located at 1412 Madison Street is surplus property. Further move the bid of $5 for the property. $5 is accepted. Further move the property be transferred to Charles Nichols, subject to the standard clause applied to the Fountain Avenue redevelopment area stating that the property would revert back to the city if owner fails to comply with the submitted proposal and substantially complete the project within two years.
Second. Second by Pollard.
There was one minor thing in the staff report, between the staff report and the submitted bid. The submitted bid is actually for a four-bedroom home, not three-bedroom with two baths, and the total cost is proposed to be $150,000.
Great. I love the comment that he has seven children. He helps to build a house for each of those children. I thought that was great.
Hopefully all in my city.
There you go. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benbury?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Commissioner Schramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Now we move on to Planning Commission items of business. We have two items of business
that are, have been put on the table, are being held. The first item of business that's on the agenda, the petitioner has asked that that particular item be continued, and so we will leave it on the table for now. There is a second item of business. Mr. Wade, you have that, please?
I move that this commission remove from the table case number VAC 2022-0001 pertaining to 1250 South Fourth Street.
Second. Second by Pollard. This is the, just to remove it from the table. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Benbury?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Commissioner Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Now you have the second.
Yes.
Motion.
I move that this commission adopt a resolution forwarding a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to vacate and close a 3,528.36 square foot alley north of George Street between South Third Street and South Fourth Street, a 2,000, excuse me, a 1,004 square foot alley south of Husband Street between South Third Street and South Fourth Street, and a 1,103.73 foot long, 12-foot wide portion of the west side of Fourth Street.
Second.
Second by Benbury. Questions? Comments?
This is for two partial alleys and also for a linear portion of South Fourth Street. The petitioner on this lot, they're already utilizing the alleys either in grass or for storage or for parking. Fences are on the right-of-way. There are professional engineers here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Josh pretty much summed it up. We're just closing two alleyways and dedicating a little bit of right-of-way and, or they're dedicating us a strip right-of-way and turning it all into utility easements. I will say, one of the owners has been out on vacation and will not be back to the fifth, so I do not have one of the owner's signatures, so
it's fine. I'd still like to get approval if possible. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Benbury?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Commissioner Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Now we move on to new petitions for the Planning Commission. Ms. Schramke,
you have our first item of business?
I do. I move that this commission adopt a resolution approving the amendment to a development plan for property located at 2761 West Park Drive.
Second.
Second by Pollard.
This is for a multi-tenant sign that is being proposed. It's proposed to be one face because the back of it is going to be facing the parking lot. On the table before you is two renderings of the signs, whichever one they may be, that looks like this, that was submitted by the professional representative, Mr. Troutman, who is here tonight to answer any further questions that you all may have.
And why do we have two presented to us? Is it either or? Is that what we're looking at?
The customer has decided which way they'll go.
Either white background or black background.
But it's one if you want the other.
The existing sign on the other side of the property is, I believe, black with a white, with white lettering.
I appreciate it. No, go ahead.
Just one side.
One side, yeah.
I appreciate you taking the extra time. I know that there's, this has been in development and you've worked very hard on it, so.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Benbury?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Mr. Morrison, you have our next item of business?
Yes, ma'am. I move that the preliminary subdivision plat for 3440, 3450, 3460, and 3482 Trailhead Drive and 245, 250, and 260 Trail Loop be approved and that the matter be continued generally pending submission of a final plat incorporating all requirements made known to the petitioners at the conclusion of the hearing.
Second.
Second by Bradford.
Who was the second?
Bradford.
Bradford.
Thank you.
Paul.
This is for the dedication of the southern route of Trail Loop, which we had been, come before this body for a while now.
It has.
Tract A3 would contain 146,897 square feet. 3B, 113,287. 4A1, 25,085, which would contain an apartment building. And 4A2, 63,258. And the proposed total right-of-way to be dedicated is 1.01 acres. The developer is asking for a couple subdivision standards to be waived, which is for sidewalks on one side, reduce the minimum setbacks as shown, which is to 15 or 20 in some cases, and reduce the centerline radius to 150 feet and 125 feet on Trail Loop as shown. And the Planning Commission has approved these same waivers before on Phase 1 and Phase 2, so this would be a continuation of the same waivers that's been approved previously. And the professional representative is here to answer any further questions that you all may have.
Basically, what we're doing there, like Josh said, is a continuation of Trail Loop, which is kind of what we're referring to as Phase 3 of this development. It's kind of been on the back burner for a while. I'm sure a lot of people like to see this completed. Probably Mr. Murphy, for sure, has been hanging this.
Can you answer that?
I can't answer that. But anyway, it's a long time coming and it will kind of complete this development out totally. So we're proposing a few more condo units to be built and two more apartment buildings, as shown on the plat.
Now, the item says continue generally. We are going to vote tonight, though, correct?
To continue it generally, yes.
Vote to continue it generally?
Yes. And what that'll do is give planning, engineering, and other departments involved time to get all the things that's necessary for that final plat, the roadway cross-section, stormwater, and all that informational stuff that we need.
Great. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Commissioner Schramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Benbury?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Crisillas?
Aye. Ms. Pollard, do you have our next item of business, please?
I move that the preliminary subdivision plat for 125 Ridgeview Street be approved and that the matter be continued generally pending submission of a final plat incorporating all requirements made known to the petitioner at the conclusion of the hearing.
Second.
Second by Schramke and Morrison.
This proposal is for a proposed 30 lots for 15 townhomes. One of the comments that staff had was to show the actual building area up to that firewall where the lot line meets. We also had a few other comments to be addressed, which I've already sent to Mr. Goins, but he's here tonight to answer any further questions that you all may have.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to speak.
Am I the only one? I am actually going to help.
Well, why don't you come up to the microphone? Come up to the microphone. There you go. It's okay. It's all right.
You're going to make me nervous, Simon.
No, 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 you're fine.
I'm so sorry. I own one of the homes that is going to be directly affected by.
Say your name and.
Yes. Lisa Richardson. Got the letter. I'm not too happy about it. I'm not going to lie to you. I purchased this home nine years ago because it was on a dead-end street, because it was next to a gorgeous set of woods where a lot of wildlife live. I've got deer running behind my house. And there's a couple of things that, I'm not going to be able to stop this. I know it's going to go through. My concerns are the right of access. How are they going to get to this property? Where are these dump trucks and all this equipment going to go through? Whose road are they going to be on? What is the access to this property going to be? Are they going to be on my street? Am I going to have to worry about cars going back and forth? Is it going to have access to Lone Oak Road? Is it going to become no longer a dead end and a thruway, I know, I'm so sorry, a thruway to, I was told it was Bleach Road or Lone Oak Road? I know what happens when there's a wreck on Lone Oak Road and the access to this neighborhood becomes very crowded and the streets are just not wide enough to accommodate all of this traffic. Are they going to burn the trees? How are they going to get rid of all of these woods? I don't know about the rest of them, but I do have an issue with my lungs. I cannot afford to breathe that. Those are my concerns that I would like to have answers to before this.
Engineers here. Are you, you are the engineer. Are you?
You're the man that bought the property?
No, I'm an engineer representing the owner. The owners are here that can answer questions as well.
I'm sorry. I want to know because when things start happening, and things are happening that I don't like, I have a right to protest because I am here saying, I'm concerned. I live here. You know, this is my, this is my neighborhood you are affecting. So, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Here's something else.
See? And, okay. Petter is where I live. That's the street I live on. I am the second to the last house on that street. So I am, forgive me, I can't read this. I don't understand this whatsoever.
So this is what he is building, and they're going to extend Petter Avenue? Petter. They'll just do it.
Oh, yippee skippy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I said yippee skippy.
No, not, not your comment. That's fine. I did hear that. They're going to extend Petter to.
It's basically an extension of Petter and Ridgeview, connecting a U shape between those two roads.
So where is, I don't, I haven't done any drafting in a million and one years, so. Oh, that's my name right there.
Yes.
Is that my property?
Yes.
Yes.
So they're going to be over in this area?
Extend those two and make a U.
I just, those are just my concerns. I don't.
Right.
Because that's the, they're probably laughing at me. That's Ernie's house. We're not on the same side of this. Okay.
On the direction.
A lot.
Oh, here we go.
But there won't be in there. We're getting there. And there won't be a new road anywhere for them to access all of these other than Petter.
Well, Ridgeview, too, correct?
And Ridgeview.
Where does Ridgeview run into?
It's at that here right now.
But it's off of that same one road end, right?
This is Petter. This is Ridgeview.
Into.
You look here. Because I can understand it a lot better because my house is right here.
Just before the yellow line. That first road is Petter and then that's Ridgeview.
So where's my house? So they're going to extend Petter clear down through here. So they're going to have to go right on my street to even get to where they're going. And somebody else is.
This way? No, I don't know.
I think it only goes that way.
Oh, I wonder.
That'd be adjacent.
It's this one and this one.
Now, this Ridgeview Street. Is this a brand-new road or is this a?
That's where it goes.
That's right. You know?
Yeah.
Because this is my.
So the neighboring.
So they're going to be two accessible.
It's where the Kmart building is, so it's, it's like.
This is where she lives.
You know where the street is.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. Anyways, those are my, those are my concerns. There's no way I'm going to stop this. It's going to happen. I know that. I just have those concerns. You know, the traffic, how they're going to get the equipment in and out without, you know, having to use our roads to do it. I've seen what happens. I, there's a whole lot of construction going on around there now as it is. They, they cut down all the trees. They're putting in townhomes or whatever. And I know what it looks like when they're done, and it is not pretty. Of all the places, of all of the land in this city with no trees on it, they have to put it right there. And I have said my piece, so thank you. I'm going to go sit down.
Well, I would echo the concerns as far as, has engineering looked at this? How are you going to get fire trucks, garbage trucks, moving vans, all that back in there? Because Petter is a tiny little street.
It is a tiny little street.
With lots of turns.
With lots of turns. You go up Petter and it's a T. That's it. It, you know, you go up Nolan Drive to Petter and it's a T. It's very tight. It is barely wide enough for two cars to drive side by side. How are they going to get all this equipment back there?
The other street? What's it all on one street?
It's, it's not any wider, and it's just as difficult to get to Ridgeway. It's even more difficult to get to Ridgeway because you're going to have to go up and turn and go around. So I don't.
Rick, can we have your input on this? Come on, Rick. If you're going to show up at the meeting, you're going to get asked.
Hi. I'm Brad Walker, and my wife, we're going to be the developers of the subdivision. And what I'd like to say first, as far as access of construction is one of your biggest concerns, we also are going to be able to enter from the Nolan Drive side of it. So the construction traffic will not at all be impeding your property whatsoever. So there's no issue with us getting any vehicles where we're going to be tearing up your road or having major trucks going in and out. We'll be offloading on the lower side of the property just for ease of access because we own on the other side of the power lines as well.
Yeah, and you can't build underneath power lines.
We're not going to build under power lines.
Oh, sorry.
But we're going to, but we're going to have access with the equipment to gain access to that side of the property, so we'll be able to enter from the lower side of the, of the road.
Hey, Mark.
The, the subdivision we're putting is not going to be high traffic. There is no access to Lone Oak Road whatsoever. We're just making a little U around it, which is for exactly what the subdivision was zoned for, is my understanding. So that's why we're not trying, trying to change any zoning. We're building it exactly as what we purchased.
The property is zoned.
Yeah, the property before we purchased was zoned for residential, and that's what we're doing. And we'll answer any concerns you have. And I can tell you, we developed a subdivision already over on, it was in the county, on Friendship Road. It's called Hunter's Ridge. And I can tell you, we haven't had a single person complain about a single thing we've done. Our neighbors love the subdivision and everything that we've got going on with them.
Are they one-story or are they two-story? Is it going to be, you know, a five-story apartment?
I can tell you right now, our plan is to be single-story duplexes with garages. Nice units. We're not going to decrease any values of anything. We're hoping to increase the value of the properties in the area. And it's going to be something that you will want, I mean, our name's going to be on it, just like Hunter's Ridge. Our name is all over that place. And with that in mind, we don't want any of our neighbors to dislike us. We want people to be there and provide housing, which Paducah needs. And so that's what we're doing, is we're going to build more housing for Paducah because that's what we're hearing from everybody. We need more places for people to move into. And so that's why we're going to develop the property.
And what about the trees? Are you going to be?
Well, we're going to, of course, have to take trees down.
No, I understand that. But are you going to burn them on location?
We are going to talk about options. I don't know completely what we're going to do, but I will tell you, and this is, we have already talked to a logging contractor. So to answer your question, anything that can be logged and used for use, I mean, I'll say this, and I don't know if it's the right term to use. I'm not a major tree-hugging person, okay? But I do not like cutting trees down and burning them for no use whatsoever. So we already have a logger that's going to come in. There's a bunch of cherry trees, there's red oaks, and there's white oaks. And the logger's going to log every single thing that we can get out of there that can be used for product on down the line instead of just cutting them down and burning them. That's what we're going to do.
Like I said, I know I'm not going to stop this. There's no way this is going to stop.
Well, we don't want you to be upset at us. I mean, we, we want good neighbors.
We're not going to stop.
Well, that's okay. But I mean, I understand what you're saying. But our goal is to make it as nice of a neighborhood next to you as can be. And, and I, I mean, it's, I mean, that's, that's what it was there for.
Because I want to come here and, because I don't have any right to complain unless I come here and say, this is how I feel about this.
Right.
But the, the road width is a definite concern.
And we're going to build the roads according to what our engineer draws. I mean, it's what's planned. That's why we have an engineer drawing everything and that's what we're going to do.
I'm worried about the old ones, the old roads.
Yeah, the new road is nice.
Going down Nolan Drive, going to Petter Avenue, they are not that wide.
Again, I'll just say, there's residential people going in and out of there right now. I mean, I've gone in and out there 100 times. And, and I can tell you, for me, it's going to be a, an easier, safer deal where people don't, I mean, right now, I have to put my car in reverse and drive backwards up both of those dead-end roads to find a place to turn around. And, well, now we're going to have a complete U, which is going to make it easier for garbage trucks and school buses and everybody else because it's going to be a complete U where we don't have to have dead ends going anywhere.
I like the dead end. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Other questions or anything?
Thank you.
Yes, tree replacement. What, what's the?
Well, it's going to be residential, so we're going to plant trees and shrubbery in it. But as far as an exact plan for, for trees, we're not going to have an exact plan that I know of. I think Jason had to step out. But as far as, we're going to make sure that we follow the EPA's guidance with stormwater runoffs and everything that goes along with it. But there is no.
Mandatory.
Yeah, mandated. We're not, we're not affecting a wetland. We're not doing anything of that sort where we have to do any reclamation of any park. It's, it's residential development, I guess. It's the only way I know how to say it.
Doesn't impact our overall plan for the city negatively to take out that many trees? Okay. Interesting. Not a tree hugger either, but we appreciate the point. I've got a lot of deer in the backyard that you don't expect to see. Raccoons, too, though.
But we can't badmouth raccoons or you'll get her upset in the back row there, so.
The biggest animals are around, and I'm not happy about taking deer or raccoons to whoever's homes. But if I'm not mistaken, that acreage that we bought is undeveloped property. It was never meant. property. It was never meant to just stay there undeveloped. It was meant to be sold and then some of them developed. So, I mean, we can't sit on that much property to let deer run. I would like to know, though, the lady that spoke, the property you spoke of that doesn't have trees, you said there's so much around, where is that? Because we cannot find it any property that's why we bought that land.
Really? Because there's success?
Okay.
I believe that's probably commercial property. I, let's, let's just.
Start saying.
Yeah.
It's not pertinent to this property, so.
It's not, and I just, as a homeowner, yeah.
I understand your concerns.
I'm not thrilled.
I understand your concerns. I truly do.
You're about to disrupt my, my home life, and, you know, I can't complain about it if I don't come down here and, and put my presence in and let you know what my concerns are. That's all.
Anything else? Any from you guys?
Any other questions, comments? So anyone else who'd like to speak?
Rick's position.
Maybe I didn't need to come to this meeting.
We're going to do some.
Always good.
Few things to remind, uh, this body, uh, this is a preliminary subdivision. It's not a final, and to get to final, you have to complete all of your engineering design and meet all of our requirements. Uh, it's not, it's not the engineers that design it, what they come up with the requirements. It's what the city's requirements are for the engineer to meet. That's the first thing. The next thing is, is that these are public right-of-ways, okay? Public right-of-ways cannot be restricted, uh, in any shape, form, or fashion. Uh, we do have school buses that must travel those routes. We do have refuse trucks. We have our own trucks to service the roads. Uh, in the event that there may be damage, uh, if the developer so chose to enter and exit the property that would rely on the routes, we would have them bonded and insured such that if they were damaged, they would be replaced or fixed to our, uh, requirements, not to theirs. I'm glad to hear that you're using the Nolan Drive access that's running along the ditch there. That's would be a perfect use for that as well. Uh, so, uh, and then, and then we are to try to develop our community so that we can have more homes. We do have a lot, unfortunately, a lot of our vacant property is grown in trees, and we do have wildlife that lives in them, but again, we're looking to expand our tax base and to make the best, highest, best use of those properties. So, um, I, I, I agree with you, 'cause when I lived, you know, in a subdivision, uh, I wanted to live at a dead-end street and those kind of things, but we can't all have dead-end streets. Uh, so, uh, one last thing is that these streets that we're talking about were not built to city standard initially because they weren't in the city.
That's correct.
It was annexed in, in the mid-seventies when Kmart got built out of Bleach Road, and then the city chose to do a residential annexation to the south where Nolan Drive, all these streets, uh, including Kmart, Cherokee Heights, was all annexed into the city that were not built to a city standard. They were built to a county standard. But we hold developers to building to city standards as they build new subdivisions. So we will be looking out for your interest as well, uh, during this endeavor, because, uh, we don't want to be trying to bring other streets to city standards that were not built that way, because we don't have the resources to do it. So we'll be protect, protecting those entrances as this development moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question, and I think it was something that was addressed in the information. What are you gonna call this street up here at the top? Just, just for my information. You've got, you've got Petter Avenue and you've got Ridgeview, but then across the top, what is that going?
To be determined. We have not come up with.
Okay, that'll be in the development plan, correct?
Where's your sister?
That'd be the other end.
Any other questions or comments?
It's gonna happen, sweetie. That's, that's, sweetie, get my thoughts and my, my feelings out there.
Of course. We appreciate that. We certainly do.
Yes, we do.
And I'm glad that the engineer, our city engineer was here tonight to give you some input and to help to.
I do too.
Relise some of your fears.
I feel so good. Well, I think what the most important thing that, you know, Rick pointed out to us is it's a preliminary development.
Right.
And the city will be very involved in the whole process. I, I really do appreciate. So I'm glad he was here to really point that out to all of us.
They're listening to you. So any other question or comment? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Commissioner Shramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Benberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Prasillas?
Aye.
Mr. Wade, you have our last item of business, please.
I move that this commission adopt a resolution approving the amendment to a development plan for property located at 5194 Hinkleville Road, subject to the following. One, the rounded top portion of the sign should be removed or modified so that the principal sign and the proposed new sign do not compete. Two, the green and white color scheme should be uniform across the existing sign and the proposed sign. And three, the base of the sign will be required to be landscaped in accordance with the City of Paducah or zoning ordinance.
Second.
Second by Morrison and Benberry.
Uh, thank you all. Uh, this has been the sign that we've had, um, some various renditions on until tonight. You'll find in front of you the final rendition that come in this morning. Uh, staff did have a few comments, um, that was in the memo, uh, that's attached to it. There you go. Um, that the top part of the sign that says West Park Plaza, uh, that should be changed or removed in order not to compete with the primary sign. Um, the green and white color scheme should be uniform across the existing sign and the proposed sign. That way they do match and, uh, present uniformity along that street. And as with any freestanding sign, the base of the sign will be required to be landscaped in accordance with the City of Paducah zoning ordinance, which means the face of that sign is required to be landscaped at the base, whatever the square footage is. So that was the three things that staff had, um, add to this, but we do believe it's approvable, uh, generally in this form. And Mr. Troutman is here to answer any questions.
What will be at the top of the curve?
You can, well.
I just thought it was an extension of West Park Plaza, that's why.
Okay.
Because if the, the, uh, uh, customer was not given room on the freestanding tenant sign that's there.
Sure. The top of it that says West Park Plaza, that should be changed to either cut off or a decoration or something to that effect. That way the sign that says West Park Plaza is the man identifier, and that's what we're looking for.
I couldn't just leave that curve off the ledge.
You can change it however you would like, Tom.
Okay.
I thought that was part of the reason for the curve was that it blended in so that as you drive by, it has a sense of belonging.
Basically, yes, you're correct. Commissioner Pollard, it just shouldn't say West Park Plaza.
This is, there's been multiple iterations of this sign, so this has substantially improved from what was originally presented.
With the curve.
Oh, it's, it's big.
I'm just speaking of preference, but with the curve, it matches the other one, which is suitable by my, is my personal view.
Josh, what are the, what are the ordinances say about us approving or denying a sign based on what it says or the design we like or not?
This is the MU zone, which is mixed use, and there was signed subdivision standards established in Platte L. eighteen eighty-nine, I believe it was. And because it's in the mixed-use zone, any development comes before this body.
Right.
Uh, because it's an integrated development. So there is discretion for the planning commission to have over the design type, lighting, or other facets of signage. And it says that specifically in our zoning ordinance, that the A1 zone and the MU zone are the two zones in the city that planning commission has purview over.
The sign, the sign is not like it.
Right.
But you, but you are correct. We do not regulate the content of what.
Right. Right. I, I was, kind of what I was gonna get to is, do we have any guidance other than the black letter of the, of the sign ordinance of how we make those decisions and exercise our discretion? I mean, is it just, we?
That's up to this body?
That's right. Yeah.
So within the staff comments, it says, uh, Paducah City's, City of Paducah sign orders one freestanding sign through every three hundred linear feet. Uh, front, street front is permitted, permitted. This has four hundred and eighty linear feet, so therefore, would you count the existing sign under that three hundred, and then this is a freestanding that is in the excess?
Yes.
Then it goes, freestanding signs can be up to seventy-five square feet, but on the page before, it says the existing multi-tenant sign on this side is two hundred and eighty-six square feet. What have I missed there?
That is, this was the latest reiteration of the zoning ordinance that we changed. Yeah, that sign was approved before, uh, the new sign regs were adopted.
It's too big, but it's grandfathered in.
Correct.
It's not in the MU zone because that was approved by a planning commission. And it would be if it was in a regular commercial zone or industrial zone. See, planning commission has complete discretion in this zone. So whatever's approved is what is set in stone until it's changed.
My question has to do with replacement of the sign. Is it going to be on a parallel with the existing sign?
Perpendicular to the highway.
Right, perpendicular to the highway, but where, will it be, like, if here's the existing sign, will the other sign be right next to it, or will it be forward or back from that other sign?
The large tenant sign, it'd be away from it, about a hundred feet.
Forward.
Forward.
Okay. That was my question, because it's hard to tell from.
North, north of the road or, or east, east of it?
There's a ditch.
Yeah. It'll be on the other side of the ditch and roughly parallel. Yeah, I was about to say, this, this makes it look like, look like it's.
Awful.
On the other side of the ditch and eastward of it.
It is across the ditch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's, it's the distance between here and there. I can move it back and forth.
True.
Right.
But I guess, I guess we're, what we're all thinking is, are we gonna have two, what look like oddly-placed, similar-looking signs?
Right, exactly.
On this road? How, how are you, how are you gonna make it look like there's?
It's only twelve foot tall.
Twelve foot tall.
Yeah, the other, the other sign is thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, well, see, that's another thing.
I think the rendering makes it a little distorted.
Exactly.
That looks, makes it look like it's two hundred square.
It looks like.
Yeah. That, that was my question too. The next one, because it was like, how big is this?
Well, Peter can do anything.
I know, I know.
So it's more that size, but that shape.
So this is gonna be.
Yay! You got to the answer right there.
Is, is this gonna be the orientation of it too, where it's facing the road?
No, it's.
It's gonna be perpendicular to the road.
Is it, that we're not gonna monkey with, for lack of a better term, the existing sign because of the cost, or because it would lose its grandfather status?
It would lose grandfather status, and that sign wouldn't be changed unless there's an application made. They can always go smaller. They just can't go any bigger.
Right, exactly. And it's already full. It's already got.
So they're painting it to a corner.
It was, the original development, it had an appropriate signage.
It did.
The landlord has since.
I know. There's been additional.
Divided.
There's a possibility of one more split.
Oh, gee.
That's what the bottom blank is for.
Yeah.
It's gonna be sitting the same direction as this one.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So it's perpendicular to the road. So here's your.
Everybody, there's your sign right there.
And it's gonna be this way.
Answer everybody's question.
I hope so.
I believe so. Thanks, Ron. Anyone else have a question?
I just wanna make sure we agreed to keep the, the overall form.
Or this is the road over here, Commissioner Pollard.
Yeah, I know.
That works for me.
Are you all telling me this is the best option that can be derived economically and aesthetically?
Well, economically, oh, I don't know what it would cost to modify that existing multi-tenant, but that would.
It would be tremendous cost there.
I'm sure.
That would be the best case scenario is to modify the existing multi-tenant that was created for the original development.
But it loses its grandfather status, and it would have to.
Go smaller, yes.
Unless we approve an exception.
Square footage of each individual tenant, the signage would go smaller.
You don't want that.
I mean, it's not.
Exactly. That's what they're gonna say.
And is there anything on the back of there? As I'm looking at, it's double-faced, okay?
It's purposely double-sided.
The other.
What would your client say if we said too bad? What, what would your client say if we say too bad? We don't like the way it looks?
Well, I had to get something through. He's got, he's got, I gotta come up with something for the arch copy now, if you take West Park Plaza out of it.
Solid.
We didn't make a spot that recommendation.
Yeah, it's a solid.
Removing West Park.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so River Valley Flooring, is it in West Park Plaza?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is a new unit in that same.
That same complex.
And there's the potential for one more unit, right?
Right, there's one more unit that's gonna split, so let's put the empty spaces.
If you drive by, if you drive by the strip center, there is existing storefronts, and it's kind of replicated to, you know, there's various setbacks that exist all the way across.
Right.
What they've done is they've split one of those tenants, and so now there is River Valley Flooring that extends across what would normally be two.
Right.
Spaces.
Right.
So let's say that's on far right. Is the other one that potentially split also on that side, or is it potentially on the other end of the strip center?
I have no idea.
The reason I ask is, I don't think it's.
I see where.
It's not a good way to promote the business if, on this new sign, you have one that's at this end and one that's at that end.
Better than no sign at all.
Well, and, and here's the thing, I agree with you. Let me say, I agree with you, but the, the problem is, or not a problem, you're gonna enter one entrance. That's it. There's not like three or four different entrances to get into that.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I mean, at the end of the day, the travel rate of the traffic on, uh, the road, primary
access, is not gonna be conducive to somebody looking for a destination, um, just because of visibility and traffic speed, so. Kind of a.
This is a point.
It's, well, but you know, it's, what are you gonna do?
If you had, if your bank wanted to have a place there, wouldn't they want a sign?
We did, and we had to get an exception because it was two million square feet.
I was gonna say, you weren't it, were you?
Yes, we were.
Well, uh.
The existing sign.
Would we, would we be able to get a more to scale and more, more realistic-looking rendering so that we can see what it's actually gonna look like?
I agree with that.
My, my honest thoughts on this are that it, it looks like it's gonna be real awkward.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Like, it's, like, it's not gonna fit in. Like, there's one sign that's out on an island on this other side of the, the water retention basin. It looks like it doesn't belong there, and it.
Words I'd use. Exactly.
Uh, I know. I mean, I'm not saying that there, that there isn't, but.
I agree. I think it's difficult.
I mean, I think with, the reason why my first question was, what discretion do we have, uh, is because I don't, I wouldn't wanna be telling your client that they can't have a sign there just because we feel like we have a say in it, but part of the ordinance is we do have discretion, and the reason why we're giving that discretion is to make sure our city state's looking nice.
Right, exactly.
And to have a, a, an awkward-looking, awkwardly-placed sign out on the main thoroughfare of Hinkleville Road detracts from the city.
My question was too, you know, this, this monument sign that's already there is in the parking lot.
Right.
Could there not be another one in the parking lot near the end? No?
There's no room on the other side of the ditch then, is what you're saying?
You know, I agree with Paul. I think the decision is hard for me to make because
I think the decision is hard for me to make because I don't think it's clear enough. I think it, well
The size.
Size, the pictures.
It's only twelve foot tall.
No, no, no. The visual
This rendering looks like it's, it's significantly offset from that sign.
Thirty minutes this morning, Josh, I can get you a better render.
Right, that's what, that's all I'm asking for, is that, is that we delay this decision until we get a better, uh, visual of what the sign's going to look like on Hinkleville Road.
I need to wait another month.
Well, yeah, we have another meeting in another month.
That's what it would be, be September the eighth would be the next meeting.
Okay, whatever you, whatever you say. I can turn it out tomorrow.
But we don't have another month.